I am now opening the open session of the Board of Selectmen Tuesday, April 14th meeting. And we're going to start with our Public Information Session with the LEPC, the Local Emergency Planning Committee, and I would like to invite John Fisher, Chief Fisher, to give everybody his report.
Thanks very much, Kate. I think probably what those listening might be most anxious to hear about even before the LEPC doings is our other LEPC hat, and that is how's Carlisle bounce back after the wind event and our power outages? As I took a drive around at 5:00, we still had three roads closed, but I'm happy to report now all roads are open. So all roads are open, but I touched base with our liaison and checked our board at 5:30. I just had, while we were on our other meeting, I had a member of the department try to reach out and see where we're at, where outages, but they were unable to get a hold of our liaison. But speaking to our liaison and looking at our board, a little after 5:30, Carlisle still unfortunately had 129 outages. I checked my board with utilities and also confirmed with our liaison that all of those are scheduled to be done prior to noon tomorrow. So I would ask anybody that's watching, I'll be able to monitor it during the day tomorrow, but if for any reason I miss it and your power has not come back on by noon, please call me and I will check to ensure that they are aware of that outage. And so I have that to report regarding our outages and the emergency we had from that wind event. From an LEPC standpoint, I think the LEPC is at a point where we have a pretty robust infrastructure. I think I've described it a couple of times in that we're able, I think, at this time to help Carlisle's most vulnerable, keep our emergency responders as safe as possible from both the, just from everything from the stuff that the Board of Health has gotten us to Chief Soros work constantly staying with getting us our PPE equipment. So we're at a good spot that way. I think we're at a good spot with our infrastructure. I think you're going to be able to hear from the other people who are involved in that piece. But I think that the LEPC going forward, as you know, Kate, we're looking for next Wednesday for each member of the LEPC to kind of talk about, all right, what do we have? What are your big three? What are your short-term plans for dealing with this virus? What's your month or medium term? And then what's this year thing? You know, for example, I think I talked about the police department's going to, we're meeting tomorrow morning with our top most five senior staff members to talk about that. Things like, you know, all right, what are we going to use for a tipping point? We're discussions with Mr. Davis. How are we going to get the transfer station permits going again? How are we going to enable Carlisle residents to get rid of unwanted drugs in their house during this time? When, when these are things that we normally provide. So things like that are kind of what's going to happen as a next step. So that's kind of where we are with the LEPC, and I know that you normally have others speak, but from the 10,000-foot view, that's where we are right now, Kate. Thank you.
Thank you. I just forgot to give my little preamble about if people have questions, would you please use the chat function? And if you're on the phone, if you could email me, I will make sure that your question gets answered tonight, and if not tonight, in our next meeting or I will respond by email during the week. Let me see, who else is here? Lori Eckler, do you want to talk about our phone plus? Tim, you have to unmute her.
Okay. Let me find her. Gosh.
Lori has been coordinating volunteers for getting groceries and... Have you found her?
There she goes.
There she goes.
Okay. So if you hear a clarinet in the background, it's a child practicing. Finally go to the practice.
Yeah, right. Finally, you get them to practice.
There she is. So we have, we've started to get more interest in the program, in the Carlisle Neighbor Response Team Program. We currently have five seniors that we're servicing with primarily grocery pickup and delivery. And we have five seniors we've taken on at Benfield on top of that, which we are just bringing them groceries from the high school. So as part of the groceries to high school supplying. And then we have a few other Carlisle families who are helping with groceries from the high school as well. And we're also offering trash pickup. So we have a volunteer doing trash pickup. There have been no takers yet. A couple of people actually want to go to the transfer station themselves with a mask and gloves on because it's their one outing, which is pretty funny. And we also have a friend who owns the West Concord Laundromat has offered to do laundry, pickup and delivery. So there was some concern about Benfield and the shared laundry space at Benfield. So he's offered at a discount to do laundry, pickup and delivery to Benfield, where he'd pick it up outside the building and deliver it back to outside of the building. So there's a couple of people that have expressed interest in that. And that's where we're at.
Excellent. Thank you. I don't see Linda, so who, is there somebody from Board of Health who would like to?
Todd, Sean. Todd Thorson?
Yes, I know. I was wondering if Todd wanted to take it. I just wasn't sure who would want to take it, that's all.
Linda's here, though.
Linda's here?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, Linda, I was looking for you and I just didn't see you. Would you like to make the report then? And Todd can add something?
Okay, sorry, you don't see.
There you are, okay.
Yeah. Let's see, we had a slight change in the case numbers, still only five confirmed. That's lab-tested positive. Four of those have recovered. Out of the six contact monitres we've been doing, five have been cleared. That means they did not develop symptoms, so that's good news. I think Chief Fisher gave a good summary of what the LEPC is doing. The Board of Health is having a meeting Thursday night, a public meeting, and the Board will be discussing how they see the planning, recovery planning, as we move out of this pandemic. Other than that, I really want to thank Lori for doing all the work with the Carlisle Neighbor Response Team. That's great that our seniors are taking advantage of it and seems to be working out well, and she has a number of volunteers. Also, one other thing, people have started self-reporting that they are a suspect case for COVID. And it may happen that they had a virtual medical call with their doctor or, so in other words, they're pretty certain they have it, but they're not being tested because testing is still pretty hard to get. And the one thing we would ask is, well, we would offer, if anyone does self-report, we would offer the services of our public health nurse for a phone call, just in case they have additional questions about the isolation or quarantining family members. And I know it would help us if they would also self-report their address to the emergency medical services. That way, in case there is an ambulance call to their home, the EMS goes prepared. All you have to do is call dispatch, leave your address, just say that if there is a call, the responders would need to have personal protection. And that helps both sides. They're better prepared to help the patient and it also protects our EMS. That's all I have.
Thank you, Linda. Anybody else from the Board of Health wanted to add anything about discussions you've had? Okay.
This is Todd. I just, I just want a quick comment over the weekend. I noticed, you know, as far as, you know, social distancing, that people were actually, you know, being, you know, even people that were running as pairs were running six feet apart side by side. So people are even getting into the surge, actually becoming, becoming much more, you know, aware of personal space. So just a heads up. Just driving around town, I saw on the weekend, that was an observation, so it's looking good.
That's excellent. Thank you. Chief Soros?
Yeah, so our call volume's been down. One thing that's interesting with our, what we do, we're kind of a team sport, and it's interesting to try to do a training team sport with social isolation. So we're kind of changing the way we do work, but, and how we do training and all that. But we're, we, at this point, basically have nobody out either for quarantine or for symptoms on our staff, so we're pretty much fully staffed right now. So we're doing okay. But we're here, if you give us a call, we will come, even though we haven't had too many calls in the last couple of weeks.
Well, good news. Angela, there you are. Some COA.
So the COA is putting more and more of our classes online. We have every single one of our exercise classes online as of now. We are doing our book club and our French group and our poetry class online. We're, Jean Bagnacci's here, and she and her husband are leading our senior moments, our coffee. So we're working on trying to do as much as we can online, and we are still doing Meals on Wheels, we're still doing medical equipment, shine appointments, and working with Lori on trying to convince more of our seniors to take advantage of the wonderful services of our volunteers.
Okay, I think that's it for, oh, no, wait, schools. I see that Jim Rocher is here and Christine Lear.
Sure, we don't have any major updates, changes since we entered into phase two of our distance learning, and we're just pretty impressed and proud with the way our teachers and our students and our families have adapted to this phase two. And right now, we're really just awaiting the next decision from the governor, right? Whether, we're hoping in the next seven to 10 days we'll hear about that May 4th opening, whether the plan is May 4th or what the change is going to be. So we, we're just waiting for the next, the next decision so we can change our next phase of the operation.
Excellent.
Christine, anything to add?
I would just clarify on that, Jim, that just because the governor opens schools, he may open schools on the 4th, it doesn't mean we will. We'll follow his lead, but, you know, we're going to make the decision whether it's right or not for Carlisle.
Absolutely.
Great. Are there any questions from anybody for the LEPC people or for this Selectmen about our COVID and emergency, other emergency responses?
Just to Chief Soros and Chief Fisher, if there are people without power, and if it looks like it may not be back until tomorrow sometime, we do have, I know at least a couple portable generators, and I have one that I'd be willing to send out if they need refrigeration redone or something like that. They could run it for a couple of hours, get the refrigerator cool, we could then move it to another house. So that capability is here and we are volunteering it.
Right. If your power's at, and you normally have a sump pump, check your basement. If you need, if you need help with that, we can help with that as well.
Right. Probably the people without power aren't hearing us here, but if you hear anything saying, let us know.
If you know somebody without power, if you can, you know, let them know if they have a phone. Their phone is still working. Okay. I don't know, I don't see any questions in the chat, so I like...
Can I throw one thing out, Kate, that I forgot to mention?
Yes, oh, absolutely.
I'd ask Carlisle residents, I actually have a strong suspicion it's not Carlisle residents, but I'd ask Carlisle residents, consider not parking on North Road. We are going to have to do some emergency parking signs up there. It was really busy over the weekend. We did a lot of work up there, but tonight it was especially bad, and I think we've kind of reached a tipping point. Unfortunately, with state closing two of the parking lots up there, that we're going to have to figure out a different plan because parking on North Road just unfortunately is not working. We can't get emergency vehicles through there, and we kind of reached a tipping point today after a very busy weekend. So I let the Selectmen know, but unfortunately, for an emergency basis, Gary Davis is going to post from Mole all the way over to Rutland tomorrow, be no parking on North Road. Sorry to didn't mention that earlier, Kate, thank you.
That's a good, good point. I think it's going to rain tomorrow, so hopefully it won't be a problem.
Kate, Kate, would you like, would you like a motion to approve the chief doing this on a as-needed basis without having to come back to us each time?
Oh, absolutely. I think that's a great idea.
I'd appreciate that.
I will second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, and we have to do a roll call, so Barney?
Arnold, I.
Nathan?
Brown, I.
Luke?
Askalilow, I.
And Alan?
Louis, I.
Reed, I. Okay. So take it away, chief.
Thank you all. Hope it doesn't become an issue.
Yeah, I agree. Okey-dokey. I am going to read what is the rest of our agenda at 7:15, which we've already missed. We were going to have interview appointment of new Council on Aging Director, 7:45, discussion of FinCom fiscal '20 and '21 fiscal recommendations, 8:45, Town Administrator's Report, 9 o'clock, Liaison Reports, and 9:15, Adjournment. So who do we have from BOA here? We have Angela and...
Verna.
Verna, okay, hi. Who was? And Walter, okay.
And Ann Quinnen.
And Ann Quinnen, sorry. It's really hard on the organizing the names and figuring out who belongs to whom, and without the faces necessarily either.
Jean Bagnacci, who's on our, who's our friend here, and she was on the interview committee.
Okay. So would you like, who wants to present?
Oh, and Walter Hickman, sorry.
And Walter, yes. Who would like to make the presentation? Do you want to take a, Tim, do you want to start us off?
I was just going to suggest Verna. I've had the most, I've dealt with her mostly at the search committee, so maybe she could summarize the search process for the Board.
Okay. You have to unmute her first, though.
That would help. Okay. Verna?
We had a three and a half weeks of accepting resumes. We got 11 resumes, which we very carefully looked at and we filled in a screening matrix. And out of the 11, we pretty immediately got rid of six. There were a couple of maybes, but after doing more research, we got rid of them. So then we had three that we interviewed, and Joan stood up loud and clear above the others. So after the seven of us interviewed her from the search team, then we had a second interview with Angela first, and then Tim and Martha Feeney-Patten joined in, and that seemed to go well. And then the next day, we had the rest of the COA office staff, which is Linda Cavalla-Murphy and Miriam Floramond and Debbie Farrell also interviewed her. So she's already, before today, talked to 13 different people from Carlisle.
Come on!
And she's still surviving.
Half the town.
Good to hear. So, and of course, at that point, I called all of her references, which were totally glowing. I was, you know, very pleased with everything that I heard, and she has quite good qualifications. I sent to the Board of Selectmen her cover letter, her resume, and the letter, of course, that we sent to the Selectmen saying why we wanted to hire her. So I'm sure if you have any questions or comments, Joan is here, I am here, others from the committee, I think almost the whole committee is here.
Well, maybe, excuse me, maybe we could have Joan introduce herself, so, Tim, if you would unmute her.
Hey, I'll set.
Hello, I'm Joan Ingersoll. It's nice to meet everybody virtually. This has been quite an interesting process, but like Verna said, I've met a lot of people, which has made me feel very comfortable and excited about this opportunity.
Okay. Are there any questions from the Board? My goodness.
Not here. We've already asked a lot of questions.
Between the 13 of us.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's very nice when we have a very thorough committee do all the question asking.
Yes.
And then come back.
Well, the one nice thing about COVID is it's not hard to get a lot of people at the same time to talk to someone because everybody's around. I'd rather not have COVID, but that is one of the benefits.
We even did a virtual tour so she knows how small our space is.
And you still want the job.
She's still here.
I know, after surveying the palatial digs.
That's right.
And the horrible commute's not going to be a problem.
I am so excited. My weigh-in says it's eight minutes, so that is just one more plus, but I mean, really, everything about it is what I was looking for, and I'm very excited, and I think it's a great team, and it's been a very, you know, professional and positive process for me. So...
It's great to hear.
Yeah.
All right. We need a motion.
I would move that the Board of Selectmen accept the report of the Council on Aging and make an offer to Joan Ingersoll to become Director of the Council on Aging.
Second.
Okay, Luke. Luke is the second. I need a roll call. Was there any further discussion? I need a roll call vote. I'll start with you, Nathan.
Brown, I.
Barney?
Arnold, I.
Luke?
Askalilow, I.
Louis?
Louis, I.
And Reed, I. Okay, so that was unanimous.
Fantastic.
Congratulations.
Very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm really excited. I look forward to meeting everyone in person.
Same here.
So do we.
Yes.
Yeah. And thank you to the search committee and the council for doing such a great job.
Yeah. Yeah.
Our pleasure.
Well, okay.
So should I leave the meeting now? Would you, or would you like me to?
No, we, you must continue. We're going to go on to our discussion of our FinCom.
You're going to be part of this mess eventually.
Yes.
Yeah, no, I'll stick around.
Find out who we are, what we do and how we do it. Stay on, it's an open meeting. So we are going to discuss the FinCom fiscal '20, '21 fiscal recommendations, and one of their recommendations was to freeze on filling vacant positions. And obviously, we have not, we have decided not to freeze COA Director. Well, so the two positions were COA Director and the Police Officer. Anybody want to have a discussion about?
I personally don't support putting a freeze on a police officer.
No, it's the opposite.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Kate, sorry.
I'm totally with you guys. I mean, I, we, we put this on because that was a recommendation of the FinCom, but I have never been in support of those positions. There may be other positions that I might want to look at, but those are, these two are not they.
Right. I agree.
I thought this was more that the FinCom was recommending a freeze on, you know, filling open positions, but recognize that the COA Director and the Police Officer position were ones that we would likely want to go ahead and fill. So I don't know if, are we, we're voting to allow those two to be filled, but that also we're voting to freeze any others, or we're just voting to allow those two to be filled?
Actually, we're not even voting on it. We are just going, we, we have voted to appoint this position. I believe we have given direction to the chief to continue his search, to not suspend his search and to just, you know, carry on with that. I think, so I don't think we need to vote on those things, so those are the sense of our committee. And I also do think, I agree with you, that FinCom understood that these positions were not going to be going by the wayside. But I think there are other positions that we could discuss, and I think that's one of the things we could be discussing tonight. And those positions are, one of them's on the warrant and one of them, and the other one's in the budget. There, there was the town clerk one, which we had already decided not to fill, right? It's been so, I don't...
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, I'm kind of muddled these days, so I apologize in advance. But then there's the Board of Health reorganization, reorganized position and the CosCom position. And the question is, do we want to revisit those for, you know, other type of cycle?
I guess, I would say that, you know, you know, we don't want people wasting their time looking for something if we're not going to approve it. But I would say that, you know, we should just give the direction to Tim to give the direction to everybody that, you know, right now, if they need a position, they really, really need to come back to us, but that if it's DPW, police or fire, continue moving forward, but let us know before you take any action.
I see, Kate, and I think that's a good, good way of slicing through it, you know, because we're talking health, safety and welfare, and we're not talking about kind of ancillary, you know, things.
And we're at the beginning of the process of looking how we might address this long-term, even short-term, over the next few weeks, and so we should not be moving forward with making offers except for these two positions for the time being.
I agree with that.
Yeah. We, you know, we may have another retirement coming up, or we, you know, the planning, in the planning department, so we will have, we'll have some hard questions to answer down the road about how we handle all that.
Yeah, and I think that our message is just, we're going to really be looking at those very, very carefully, so talk to us well before you start doing anything.
Yeah.
Whereas the other, the other three, go ahead and do it and let us know.
Yeah, but I, just, I'm just trying to flag, you know, where there'll be issues. All right. Any other discussion about positions and funding positions? And then there's the freeze on the fiscal '20 discretionary spending. That's this year's spending. Tim, would you like to tell us what's going on with that?
Well, we had another department heads meeting today where we reiterated the Finance Committee's recommendation that all discretionary spending be held in abeyance for the remainder of the fiscal year, the same message that we gave to the department heads a week prior to that. So I think it, the message has been, has been heard, it's been received, so we're going to need to be vigilant going forward, but I think people understand the gravity of the situation. And I think the, one example that actually Priscilla brought up, which I think is a perfect example, is that she has money in her budget to go to a number of conferences during the year, and trainings and so forth. A number of those trainings have been canceled, so it wouldn't be proper for her to spend that money on something else. That's something that you just, you know, leave in your budget and roll over to free cash at the end of the year. It shouldn't be seen as an opportunity to spend more money, particularly in the final quarter of the year, under the current circumstances. So I do think that the department heads understand what's before them. And also, Chief Fisher reminded them of what he, he took away from last week's meeting with the Finance Committee, that they're going to be looking for a 5% reduction in either the operating budget or a combination of operating and capital, you know, as an exercise for them to reevaluate the fiscal '21 budget before we get to town meeting at the end of June. So the departments, I had hoped we'd, we'd have the guidance from the Finance Committee to, to give to the department heads. We don't have that yet, but they know what's coming and they've started to look at their budgets.
You know when the Finance Committee is meeting next, Tim?
They, they met last evening, so it may just be that it hasn't come out yet.
Okay. Right. And do we know if there are large encumbered things that are ready, that are coming through the pipeline, that, and... But, and could any of them be unencumbered?
I think it may be too early for some of the large year-end encumbrances, but, you know, certainly this, this recommendation or guidance is applicable to all departments. Frankly, the Finance Committee, I think, was clear about that.
Anything further on freezing of the discretionary spending? Okay, we have the review of the April Town Meeting Warrant for Necessary Fiscal Articles. It may be that we want to have a very, you know, short, clean town meeting, and we just get our budget done, and that's it. And then we postpone everything to the fall. So I think we want to review the warrant again. Tim, did you want to walk through it with us? I noticed in your Administrator's Report, you had suggested some of the warrant articles you thought could be postponed.
Right, since we do plan on having a fall town meeting, and there's some interest in making this kind of a, hopefully a shorter, cleaner meeting if we can in terms of necessary financial articles. I had a list of articles I thought could be deferred, and I'll run right down. Article 12, Funding for COA Outreach Position. Article 14, Bond Premiums. Article 15 was the CCRSD Parking Lot, which I think we would believe at this point. I understand they've done the same in Concord. Article 19, Capital Stabilization Fund, no time sensitivity there. Article 22, Career Reborg Funding, $5,000. Again, not, not critical to do what at the annual town meeting. Article 23, Senior Tax Deferral Limits.
I'd like to keep that one in if we could.
I'm just making a list of suggestions. None of these are in or out at this point, I guess. And then Article 24, Pointed Town Clerk. Article 25, Three-Year Term for the Moderator. And Articles 26 and 7, to change Select Men to Select Board, as it appears throughout the bylaws. And again, that would just leave the, I think, the critical financial articles that we need to vote on, on the warrant. And some of the rest of this is, although it's important, it certainly could be done at a fall town meeting as well.
Yeah. Can we, so, of the ones that Tim just said, just enumerated, Nathan would like to keep the, the. Yes. Can I take a sense of the committee on everybody, on other people?
I agree. I think we should keep that one in there just because it's more time sensitive and could have an impact well before town meeting, before the fall town meeting.
And it addresses a lot of the problems that we're worried about for the, our residents.
Exactly.
Around this thing.
I would agree.
Okay?
Yeah, I agree as well.
So do I. So this is not one that we would like to take off? Is there, are there any others that, that Tim mentioned that anybody thinks should not be taken off for this one?
I do not have any others.
Well, he listed a whole bunch that had no fiscal ramifications.
Right. Barney?
Well, I just wanted to raise the Town Clerk question, just because my recollection is that if we, if we don't do it this year, that it slows things down in terms of next year. Am I, am I remembering correctly that there was some time sensitivity to this in terms of the town elections?
I think only in terms of you have to do it within the fiscal year. So it would still be, go ahead.
Yeah, I think there's also, it's a, it's a three-year term, right?
Yes.
So it would, it would be putting it off until three years, because, you know, we probably wouldn't, we probably wouldn't do this in the middle of somebody's term, right? Or we haven't done in the past.
I would just add that the election in the spring is for the remaining one-year term of the previous Town Clerk. So whoever's elected in May or June is only going to serve another year before they'd either be an appointed clerk or they'd be running for another term, a three-year term. So the election is only for the remaining year of Mary DiOttorelli's term.
And so we could, in the fall, make this change, and it would be able to be implemented in the spring elections 2021.
It would have to be approved by the state legislature, but yes, that would be the goal.
Assuming we could go through those steps, yeah.
Yes, that's right.
Okay.
Tim, I wonder if Abba wants to say anything about the outreach position, because I know that we've requested the Community Chest for funding for that. So she might want to say something, and she's muted.
Oh, let me see. She is unmuted now, I don't know.
Abba?
Yeah, hi there. I think at this time, I really do not know what the situation is going to be as far as what we will all be able to do. But I feel the need for social worker would be actually more than ever because people are more isolated, seniors are more isolated now. That's what I feel, but we have to wait and see what would happen in the next few months, how we will deal. We, Angela would know that the calls have started to increase a bit as to what they want now. But what would happen after a few months, we do not know. So that is a very big question as to, we know like our current social worker, Peter, he is working many more hours than actually what he does. So there would definitely, I feel, a need for more social worker come fall.
Abba, do you have any clearer indication of where the Community Chest is on this?
Not at this time. I think they, they kind of hinted to us when we met them in our conference call in May, sorry, in March, that because their fundraising was also affected by coronavirus, they had no clue how much funding they would get. So we have no idea at this time whether they will be able to support. They will get back to us only in May.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I feel like we just move forward with the COA Director, and we just have no idea what's going to happen, or what, you know, the funding, or, you know, where we're going to be in, you know, throughout this year, in that we should really, you know, just withhold this for now.
The other, excuse me, the other thing is that it's not as if we're going to have to wait until next April either. If, you know, there'd be, first, if you got the funding from the Red Cross or this Community Chest, we still have a chance to act in October, which is not that far afterwards. Because this whole thing was dependent on the Community Chest grant anyway.
But we do always want to make sure that if we're doing a fall town meeting, that that's not budgetary impacting, that those are things that are outside of the budget.
Well, normally we do, but this year, there might be some budgetary things because we are putting them off in order to give ourselves some time to plan.
True, there may be some, yes.
Yeah. Well, I wonder if we, I wonder if we ought to just give ourselves a week to think a little bit more about the, this outreach worker. And I don't know if there's a way to, for Angela or Abba to give us, you know, more of a sense of what they think is coming. But I guess I'd like a little time to, to think about this before we decide on that particular article.
I see James here from FinCom. Are you here to say something about last night's meeting, by any chance?
I'm just more logging in right now just to listen a little bit. But, I mean, I'm happy to answer any questions or summarize it. I'm not sure if other people, Victor might be coming on, I'm not sure.
Okay, so what do you guys think? Shall we have James start, or shall we wait to see if Victor might join us?
Well, can we?
Are we ahead on the schedule?
Well, we're talking about, you know, some of the things that you had recommended last time we met, freezing some positions. And so the question was, did you revisit that? And have you come to any conclusions yourselves? You know, what have you guys decided?
When, when do we have to make this decision to get it? If we're going to change what's on, what's going to be on the warrant at the town meeting, when do we have to make that decision?
Tim?
Well, I thought the goal was to, to kind of use the next month to do this review of operating budgets and the warrant. And I would think within the next couple of weeks, we ought to have a pretty good idea of what.
So we don't have to make a decision on this tonight?
Oh, no.
This is strictly for discussion.
Yep, got it, yeah.
So, okay.
James, did you have, did you want to tell us a little about where you came out last night?
Sure, yeah. So the same sentiment that we had when we had this conversation with the Board last week. We would like to encourage all non-discretionary spending, of course, for all the departments for the remainder of '20. FinCom still really thinks it's important to try to increase the capital reserves that the town has for any unforeseen expenses that might result from what's going on right now. We're still trying to decide what we feel is the right approach for '21 in terms of the budget, if it's making a recommendation to departments with a slightly lower guideline budget, or if the FinCom goes through department by department and kind of looks and discusses where savings might be. We haven't come to a conclusion around that yet. The idea of a possible request for a percentage off from the guideline is being discussed as well. In terms of the positions, which I think that's where I logged in right now, we, we didn't really discuss the positions very much. So I wouldn't really want to comment on that as a FinCom member. More just from the higher level, that we certainly do feel that we want to try to keep in mind that we want our, the budget to be as tight as possible so that we can raise the capital next year. So we were more discussing areas where that could happen. We're also aware that, for instance, if, if we push any long-term caps or anything out further, it's likely more of a delay than it is just avoiding the cost. So we're very cognizant of the fact that arbitrarily, if we push something off for '21 in long-term caps, it'll increase our potential spending in '22, because it'll likely come back and whatever else might be there. So that was the nature of our conversation. We didn't have any conclusion, conclusive ideas, but we're continuing to discuss it. We're trying to get a feel for how the schools will, will react towards our requests for a little bit of tighter budgets in '21. And that's where we left it, where we're going to reach out to them and try to have a conversation, and maybe invite the schools on to one of our future meetings.
Okay. So you haven't, you're not really ready yet to go out to the departments to give them some guidelines about what you might be looking for for next year as an exercise?
No, I have a feeling we will probably come to that conclusion next week at our meeting. But no, we're not quite ready yet.
When are you meeting, James? Next week?
I believe we are, yeah.
Okay. All right.
Did the Board discuss? I saw the previous thing, I wasn't able to log in earlier. I saw that there were the two positions, the police, or the various other positions. Is that where I came in towards the end of that?
Okay, so what the Board decided was that they would authorize the appointment of the COA Director or opening, offering of the position. And the, authorize the Chief of Police to continue with his search for his open position that was due to a retirement. We also have discussed our kind of criteria for positions, and if they have to do with health, safety, and welfare, so DPW, Police, and Fire, and, and Health. Where, we want to support those because we want to support our residents in, in those areas.
Okay, great. There was a similar thought process to that line of thinking last night when we were looking at the various costs and expenses for '21.
I think just, I think just a little bit more specifically, what we said was, you know, we don't want people to be wasting their time. So if it's Police, Fire, DPW, and they have a position that comes open or that is open, they should go ahead and go forward, and then let us know what they find out. If it's any of the others, they should ask us before they do any work on it.
Okay, thank you.
Tim? All right, so we were talking about what articles we could take off of this current warrant that we have, draft warrant, and push off to an October meeting, both for, well, mostly to keep the meeting shorter, because if we have any problems with the social spacing and quorums and everything like that, we want to keep the meeting shorter. But also to maybe buy us time for some of our naughtier decisions and push those off until the October meeting. And that's why we were saying, for instance, the article for the Outreach Coordinator from the COA would not be put on this warrant, but would be considered for the next warrant. And that's where, and the, okay. Are there any other ones that people, let's say, financial ones, that people should think that we should be looking at beyond the non-financial ones for, for October?
What about Complete Streets?
Well, I was, I know you should ask. That's where I was going with it.
That would, that would stay on the, the June warrant.
Well, I guess the question is, I don't know, do we, originally, when we started with the Complete Streets, we thought the state was going to pay for this whole thing, and we were going to pay $50,000 extra. Before COVID, I was, you know, more or less willing to, you know, put before the voters whether they wanted to spend another, you know, $250,000. But I'm wondering if this is really the most important infrastructure that we have, that we would want to spend that much money on at this point of view.
So, you know, we are still getting money from the state, and it's a significant amount of money. We do have to do it before the summer's out. You know, we're probably going to run into timelines that will extend it into the beginning of the school year. I don't know, I guess, you know, so I don't know if Tim had that conversation with Alight or whatnot, if we could actually start on time. You know, the, the thing is though, I, you know, because I know FinCom has kicked this around. I don't see this as discretionary spending. I mean, this is, this is infrastructure, and it's public health and safety. I mean, that's, you know, that's really the reason that we went for the grant in the first place. You know, the feedback and the numerous meetings that we've had in town, it's, you know, people have been very supportive of it from a safety standpoint. You know, we are using some Chapter 90 funds. And, yeah, I mean, it's, you know, the $50,000 that Melinda threw out last year, I mean, that was just a shot in the dark. I don't think she, you know, really knew, you know, what the final number was going to be, and none of us did until it actually got quoted out. So, you know, I honestly, I just, I think if we don't do this now, then we give the grant money back. We don't apply for another Complete Streets thing, and. And, you know, I don't know, but there's going to be backlash from, you know, residents in town because, you know, it was, it's been now going on for a couple of years. And, and that's why Complete Streets even came about. Yeah, anyway, that's kind of my two cents. You know, I just, I think we should move forward with it.
Well, I'm, I'm much less enthusiastic about it at this point. I think we, you know, this is a large amount of money, you know, when we're asking the town to be extremely conservative in its, in its forecast for where we're going to be financially. And while I, it would be, it's, it's a nice thing to have. Is it essential? That I'm less confident of that.
No, no, there's, there are going to be residents that are going to push back.
There will always be residents push back against anything.
It's health and safety. I mean, it's, I don't know if John is still here. But, you know, I mean, I, I see a shake in your head, but, you know, there are people who have been, almost been hit. There are people who have been hit. The crossing guards have issues, you know. I mean, we didn't go into this just willy-nilly, you know. I mean, there was a reason behind it. It's not just to improve the rotary. It's, it's, it's health and safety and walkability.
I, I understand. My, my, and I, I don't dispute any of that. My concern is that we may have things far more urgent to spend $250,000 on than this project.
Can, can we, can we put off voting on this? And let me reach out to some of the residents who have come and been very adamant about this because I, I think if we just wipe this off, we're asking for trouble.
Well, we're not voting on any of these tonight. We're discussing them tonight. The possibility of, of pushing them off to another time where we have more certainty about what's really going to happen. I guess I'm also not anxious to spend $250,000. There's a lot of, a lot of other things that need to be spent as well. And, and that are not being spent for infrastructure, for health, safety and welfare of our employees, for instance. Air quality in the DPW, air, air quality at the fire station. Yeah, actually, the fire station was having some problems too, but definitely at the police station. And.
What are those? Where did air quality issues come in from? Fire and police?
Well, there's, there is air going through the top instead of going through ducts and going through a plenum was, I guess.
But that, but that's part of the 240,000 that's in, is that part of the 240,000 that's in the long-term caps already?
Yes, that's, that is, but what I'm saying is that there are other things as well that we're not.
Okay, what's the fire department thing? I mean, we can't just spout random things. You know, I mean, we have to look at this logically. I'm making a point that there will be significant pushback.
Fine.
So, I mean, you can't necessarily compare, you know, the, the police thing to the, to, to complete streets because, you know, all of a sudden there's an air quality issue now at the fire department that we haven't. But I mean, we can't just make things up just because. You know, I mean, let's actually discuss this in use facts and get town, town input. I mean, this is silly.
That's what I was going to say here is that, you know, I can, I really can see both sides of it. I am very aware of the concerns of some of the residents that have, you know, really been pushing this. And I also am really cognizant of how much time and money has already been spent on it. And so to drop it, you know, gives me pause. I, I also think this may be one where we leave it on the town meeting warrant precisely because we want residents to have a chance to say whether they support spending that amount of money or not.
It was originally supposed to be all paid for by the state. Wasn't really costing us anything.
Yeah, I know that, but we, rather than us making the decision to not include it on the warrant, which essentially means it's not going to happen, right? We lose the grant this year and, and who knows what next year. I, I, I think, you know, I, I'd want to think about it some more, but I believe that it's one where we ought to give the town the opportunity to vote on whether, within the context of what we come up with in terms of an operating budget and, and where we think the finances of the town are going to be over the next year to two years. And then make that, make that choice as a town, at town meeting rather than us deciding it. But I, I do think it warrants, you know, more discussion for sure by us in the FinCom.
Kate, can I add something to that? The, a number of weeks ago, the board voted to award the contract to Allied Paving for this project. And since that time, we've been negotiating a contract with them at a construction schedule, all of which is contingent upon getting the additional funding at town meeting. So it, it would be good to know if, if this, you know, if this is a real project or not before we go too far down that road. So if there's, you know, it is the board's decision. If, if that isn't going to be on the warrant, then we wouldn't have to negotiate a contract and, and a construction schedule. But we're proceeding as if we are. And then, you know, and Luke's put a lot into that and, you know.
This isn't the first project that, that has been brought forward and that where we wildly missed how much it was going to cost. I'm looking right at the chief of police. His project, you know, went nowhere. And this board decided not to put it on the warrant and not let the town decide whether it wanted to spend the extra money it was going to take to finish it. So I don't see what's the difference between that one and this, and the roads ones is.
No, it's about a million and a half and, and, you know, so it's significant. And there's, and there's no match, and there is no match for any sort of state funding for the police.
I understand that.
$350,000 back. And we're expanding it beyond the scope of what we originally stated because we, we felt that it would be better and it would actually improve safety. So we are partly responsible. The Complete Streets Committee and, and the Board of Selectmen who voted on it is partly responsible for expanding that, the scope of that work. You know, I mean, it's, it's again, it's kind of apples and oranges. You know, there was no match from this, from the state for police. You know, that, that's a big piece here is that, yes, the state said it was going to be $350,000 and they were wrong, right? And, and that's kind of where we're at now. So we have to supplement it somehow. And if the town decides to, then they decide to. If they don't, they don't. But, you know, I mean, I think just the broad brush stroke of, no, we're not going to do this now after, you know, and I, I put a lot of effort into it, but there are a lot of other people who put even more effort into this. And it's been a multi-year project to just, so to just kind of give it up now, you know, I, I, I think is irresponsible of the board. You know, I, I agree with Barney's point that, you know, we can discuss this further. But, you know, I think this is one of those you let the town vote.
Okay, made my point. Not going to repeat it. Any others? Okay. Well, this will, we'll bring this back up because we're not ready to put this to bed. And I think that we need to hear from FinCom about what's going on with their exercise and what recommendations they have as well. But have we, we have agreed on the other, the non-financial ones to take those off and put them in the October? Now, everybody's changing. Luke was down there and now he's up there, so.
The non-financial ones can stay in June, can't they?
The non-financial, well, the, the idea was we were going to try to make it as short as possible. The, the, the meeting to be as short as possible so it could be only one day. Because the non-financial ones are very often are, have heavier discussions about whether they, people want to do it or not. And we usually pass our $30 million budget with no discussion.
In the first five minutes of the meeting.
Take, you know, four hours, so. Mkadook. I've lost my, my agenda.
Town administrators report.
Town administrators report. Scrolling through. It's a problem with not having a paper.
All right, we already talked about the recommendations on the warrant articles. I just had a note in there that the date of the town caucus has been set for Monday, May 18th at 7:00 PM with a rain date of Wednesday, May 20th. And it's a rain date because the caucus may in fact be held outdoors. So it's not really known at this point what, what form or shape it's going to take. But the town clerk has selected that date, which allows enough time between that and the June 30th election. Town meeting would be one year before that, and one week before that, the 23rd of June. And I'm sorry, Alan.
Okay, is it appropriate to advertise those dates so that people who wish to run could begin to gather signatures if they, by whatever means they can do it safely?
It, it would be, and I'll, I'll confer with the clerk and see if she's finalized that. But she did pass that along last week.
Yeah, just in case a caucus couldn't be held. Yeah.
Right.
Tim or Kate, have we resolved the issue with our town meeting date and the Concord town meeting date? And then we're planning to run more than one night in a row?
That's still being worked on. As far as I understand, Wayne is talking to the moderator in Concord. And it may, you know, I, I don't think it's insurmountable, you know.
I think it was more of an issue when the capital project was still on the table. I think now really the only issue is the operating budget. And I think that, that can be accommodated easy, more easily than the discussion of the capital project.
Okay, and, 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 you know, it's not clear that we can do any of this because you need to have 150 people for a quorum. And I don't know how we fit 150 people with social spacing exactly and how we, you know. So all these things still have to be worked out. But we're trying to give ourselves a goal. Because without a goal, it's hard to, you know, to really kind of knuckle down and figure these things out. And we want to give ourselves some wiggle room on all of this as well. And for the caucus, you don't need to have papers in order to be nominated at the caucus. You just need to have somebody join the caucus to nominate you. It's, if you don't get nominated, then you need your signatures.
And there's no quorum requirement for the caucus, is there?
No, there is. 25.
25, okay. Thank you.
Yes.
That we can do.
That I think we can do.
Okay, and then just finally looking forward to the board's next two meetings. We'll meet next Tuesday, night the 21st. And on April 28th, in addition to the usual public information session, we'll have a presentation, discussion, hopefully vote on award of the Bana Davis RFP for the telecom tower location. Also, report from the Audit Committee on the FY 20 Audit.
So that'll be on the 28th. Okay, so that's our, sort of our regular meeting. So we're going to try to space our, our business out unless, well, do we want to get, ask FinCom to have something kind of more definitive for us on the 28th so that we can start making decisions? Or do we, do they? Have we worked backwards from when the warrant has to be published? And all this stuff so that we know when we have to close it and all this jazz?
Well, we, generally, the rule of thumbs, we'd like to have it finalized 30 days before the town meeting. There's only a seven-day notice period for publication, believe it or not, for an annual town meeting. But we've always exceeded that requirement. So if we're, if we have it finalized 30 days out, we can make sure that it's posted, you know, two weeks or better before the town meeting. I would say by the end of May, we should have the pretty near final version of the warrant.
The 28th would work on that.
On the 28th, if we, if we got information on the 28th, then our next meeting would be the 12th of May. We'd want to be ready to make some final decisions, right?
I, I'm wondering though about, is James still on? Yeah, you are. Hi. Whether the FinCom, whether you're thinking you might be ready by our meeting next Tuesday on sort of clearer guidance about what you might ask of departments in terms of looking at their budgets for this current, I mean, for the new, you know, 2021 operating budget. Because I'm thinking about what I heard the FinCom talking about last time, which was if that's the way you go, that you'd be asking departments to submit that information and then you might end up doing some individual discussions with departments. And so that before, it might take a little while for that to get wrapped up. So I'm just wondering if waiting until the end of April, thinking we would get something, then, you know, to just, we would discuss things in mid-May might be a little late.
Yeah, so I, definitively, I'm not sure. But I would say that the FinCom's goal at our next meeting is to have a, have an approach for what we're going to do for 21. We discussed at last night's meeting, the timing for having to discuss with certain departments and have them resubmit and such if we go that route. So we'd want to give them as much time as possible to speak with us. So I would imagine that our goal would be to have some sort of a path at our next meeting that we can then reach out to the departments. So our next meeting, the goal was to discuss that as well as to go through the warrant book a bit. So we can take maybe in, I, I don't want to say positions, but we can discuss which ones we're leaning towards supporting or not.
And did you say your next meeting is this coming Monday?
I believe we scheduled it for this coming Monday. I'd have to check my notes on it, but I'm fairly confident it is.
So maybe we just put a placeholder on our agenda for next Tuesday that may be, you know, continuing discussion of the.
Financial planning.
That would be the 28th, not the next Tuesday because we're, I think we're trying to, unless you really think you want to spend some time, you know, meet every Tuesday beyond the LEPC briefing for the town?
My feeling is I would like to meet every Tuesday. We've given up Thursdays now.
Okay, I'm just wondering, you know, I want to make sure I know what people want. I don't want to overload schedules if you, you know.
Yeah, I mean, they can be short meetings, but I think we have enough to do and frequent meetings under this, under these conditions is appropriate.
Okay, that's, I mean, I like that better too. Thought I had heard the opposite from some members, so I wanted to be sure.
Kate, I believe next Monday is the Patriots Day holiday.
Do we have to go to work?
I don't, I don't think you can have a public meeting on a holiday.
That's Monday.
Ours would be Tuesday.
Ours is going to be Tuesday.
The night before, yeah.
We discussed that. Thanks, Tim. I had forgotten. We discussed that. We made the same joke that we're all just going to be home and it's not.
No, but legally, can we do it?
So legally, it was left that I think Kim was going to look into. If legally we couldn't, we couldn't. And then if not, we were going to look at other dates, maybe even Tuesday, which may not be ideal if it overlaps with your meeting. But whomever, I forget who our liaison is, but maybe reaching out to Victor and coordinating between the two committees would be good.
Who is the liaison with FinCom?
I thought you were, Kate.
Okay, I'll reach out to Victor. I thought you were, actually, Barney.
I thought it was Kate.
You thought it was me? Okay, I have to look it up. All right. I thought it was Barney because that way she was going to learn about finances, but that's why. Okay.
She has a horse farm. She already knows about that.
I will reach out to Victor. See what's going on with your meeting. Great. Any other comments?
Just, so we, we ended up with this. We'll talk about it, not, not next Tuesday, but the following one. So FinCom has had a chance to talk about it? Is that where we are? Is that where we landed?
No, I think we landed that we are going to talk about it next Tuesday regardless of what FinCom says. Or maybe I got that wrong, Alan.
Well, we can put a placeholder for, to say financial planning, and we can talk about it if we have something to talk about. If FinCom is ready, then we can do it. If not, we'll just give it over.
And then we're thinking we'll finalize at least our position as a board around the town meeting warrant articles, what's in and what's out at the April, the last April meeting of the month?
If we work backwards from June 23rd. One, two, three. 30 days before that is approximately May 26th, so that's right.
The second meeting in May, right.
That's the second meeting in May. We will. So I would say the 12th of May is the time we actually, we want to make all those decisions.
Okay.
Okay. Liaison reports?
How about a report from the liaison to the finance committee?
We had the finance committee have beer. I didn't need to. And they didn't tell me they were having a meeting, so I didn't even know.
Just kidding, just kidding.
I do have a report from the municipal facilities committee, however. And they, they got the message that there would be no discretionary spending and the chief police got, we have several bids on painting the exterior of the fire department, sorry, police department. And they ran around $30,000 because they all have to have prevailing wage and there's some carpentry because there's been some bird damage, woodpecker damage to the backside of the building. And so normally, I think the municipal facilities committee would have felt that this would have been within their purview to just go ahead and do. But they are going to wait and have asked the chief to wait because we think there's more important things to be done on the building than the painting that have to do with health, safety and welfare, especially, for instance, the air quality and the platinum with the wiring there. And so we are not going to authorize that money until later. And only after, you know, a presentation is made to the selectmen of all the other things that, small things that need to be or could be done to a lot of the buildings, but which we don't want to do yet because we want to make sure we know where we are. And want to do the, the essential things first. So I think that's about where we were. I don't know if the chief wanted to add something to that.
No, I think that, that's a, I also think the optics for having the building painted would just be completely wrong. And I don't think it's going to cost us down the road. I know that it's not ideal. It will look shabbier, but I don't think this is going to cause us the, the building not to be as, as reliable and durable in it. You know, we really have to stick to things that really have to do with operations, like fixing that problem that we realized that there's no fresh air on the first floor. Like, and then fixing that electrical issue we had, like, so some of the, some of the absolute critical safety things are the things that we probably would expect to bring back to the selectmen for consideration through, through, through municipal facilities. And just kind of put off, for lack of a better word, the things that don't have to do with health and safety. That, your words, Kate, which is exactly what we talked about. So, but thank you for, thank you for pointing that out.
That was about it for me. So I'm ready to accept a motion to adjourn unless there's something else that people want to talk about.
I move we adjourn.
All right. Let's not all speak at once. Well, I'll do a world call just because I think we have to. Barney?
Arnold, aye.
Nathan?
Brown, aye.
Alan?
Louis, aye.
Luke?
Oscar, Lillawite?
Reed, aye. Okay. See you in a week.
I'm sorry, I can't assist with that request.
But if you provide the audio content, I'd be happy to help you with that.
If you have any questions or need further information, please let me know.
Thanks for your time.